The regular meeting of the Belleville zoning board of adjustment for December 3rd, 2020 will now come to order. Court call to roll.
Caruso. Giordano.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Loza. Mattia. Pedalino. Sheldon. Valano.
Yeah.
Del Gersio.
Here. Who didn't answer?
Loza is not present and Pedalino are not present. I got emails from both of them that they will not be present this evening.
Oh, wonderful. Well, let me ask you a question. Mr. Lopez, you did not get a copy of the, um, of the memorialization, not the memorialization.
Transcripts.
Uh, transcript from last month, correct?
No, I, I did not receive them.
He did not receive one, but Mr. Giordano, I believe, then did not receive one, right?
No.
Which, which would mean they can't participate in this meeting, in this case, unless you start all over again. Otherwise, you're only gonna have five members for the case. Mr. Giordano.
I, I can hear you, Mr. Chairman. I'd have to discuss that with my client if he wants to start all over again. I will call him. If you give me a minute.
Yes, go ahead. In the meantime, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm gonna walk away from the screen and call my client, okay?
All right. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance in the meantime.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go. All right, good. Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, without borders, with liberty, and justice for all.
Adam's secretary has noted that the meeting been given according to the sunshine law.
Certification of this meeting has been advertised according to the sunshine law.
Okay. Uh, everybody that was here last month had a chance to look at the minutes.
Give me one minute. Jury, jury is echoing.
There is an echo. Whoever has the other audio on needs to take it off.
What else? Hold on, I'm lowering it. Yeah, a little bit. Hold on now.
That's clear.
Is it all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody wanna make any changes to the minutes?
I'm making a motion to move the minutes.
Motion made by Mr. Valano to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Court call to roll, but Mr.
I know.
Lopez cannot vote on the minutes because they were not here.
I know.
Okay.
Caruso.
Yes.
Mattia. Sheldon. Valano. Del Gersio.
Yes. Okay. So now we're just gonna have to wait and see what, uh, Mr. Uh, yeah, she has a lot to do. No, second case, I'm gonna bring that up.
Yeah, I just received their emails.
You just got it now?
Huh? I just received Barbara's email at 5:20. She says she was trying to reach you, Jerry.
Well, forget about reaching me today.
Jerry, did you get that issue resolved?
Which issue? Of the phone?
Yes.
Forget it. I'm just saying, I'm not here. I'm, I'm.
Hey, what's your problem?
He could hear me. Oh. I got a big mouth, of course.
Oh, no, that's the sound guys, it's so bad, you know? I'm almost.
They muted me?
Mr. Chairman, I am back. I'm sorry for the delay, but I had to discuss so that my client understood it. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So my client would like to hear the case tonight, so he's willing to start all over again.
Oh, okay. No problem.
You just gotta give me a minute to put my notes together, that's all.
Yeah, because now you have to start from scratch because you have two members hearing it tonight that didn't hear it last month, exactly.
Correct, and I'm ready. And a minute or two and I'll be ready.
Yes, take your time.
Okay.
Now, now let me tell you something. Bobby, you have the second case too?
I do.
Now, on the second case, it's the same situation. Well, no, you would have seven.
I never started the second case.
Huh?
Second case is brand new, it doesn't matter.
Yes, but there's a problem. I read through the application and I saw that there was a resolution that we did 10 years ago.
Yes, that's correct, and.
It would be proper if the members had gotten a copy of the transcript before we hear the case.
It was part of the application, the resolution.
Yes, but not the transcript.
Well, I don't have the transcript. I don't know if you can get the transcript.
The town should have the transcript and I should have, I, I feel we should have to read the transcript before we participate in the case because as I read the resolution, it said they went from three units in the basement down to one. And now they wanna.
That was correct.
It by one.
I'm sorry, Chair?
I said, and now they wanna increase it by one, so I think we should read the, the transcript of what happened 10 years ago before we go forward with that.
Well, I think you ought to ask Frank right now if he's on, if you have a transcript from 10 years ago. I doubt it.
There should be. If there isn't, there's gonna be a problem because by law, by our town law, we're supposed to have a transcript in the applicant. And I know 10 years ago, it was required. So it should be in the final case in that application. It should be there. They should have to find it because it's gotta be there. It was required. Also, Michelle Quick is here, and I think she was there 10 years ago. And the question is, maybe Michelle may have a copy in her archives.
I, if I was there, I should, and I believe I was there 10 years ago, so.
I agree with that, Michelle. You, I would say you were there 10 years ago.
I think so, so I should have it.
So I think, I think we should put for her to, i- if the town don't have it, for her to get it, to get, send a copy to the town and for the town to make, uh, multiple copies to send to all the board members before the next meeting. Before we participate in the case.
Obviously, if you're gonna have Michelle send it to the board members, I, I need to get a copy.
Yes. Oh, yeah, and it would be to your advantage also. Because you would know what happened 10 years ago. I don't know if you did the case 10 years ago.
I did, I did, and I do know what happened.
Oh.
And the tra- and the resolution, and the resolution makes it clear. I don't think the transcript's necessary, but you're the chairman and you're making that decision.
Well. Would anyone have the date of that?
I got it. Uh, I, if you give me a minute to switch files, I'll get that for you.
Okay, so I could find it easily with the.
Hearing date, hearing date, November 4th to 10.
Okay, that sounds right.
That's according to the resolution.
While you're chatting, I'll try to check here.
Oh, you, you have it on in front of you, all that stuff?
I might. I did get a new computer since then. I don't know if I transferred everything over. If not, I have it on a disk.
Yeah, November.
Research it tomorrow as well. Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Not in tomorrow, I can research it Monday.
So, uh, are you ready to particip- uh, proceed, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mr. Gassion with the first case?
I am, but what's the decision on the second case? So I, I let my witnesses go.
She's got the transcript.
Do you want, do you want me to check right now?
We can do it now or later, whatever way you wanna do it, Mr. Gassion.
Well, the question is, are you gonna hear the case tonight if Michelle tells you she does not have the transcript?
No, because there still should be a copy in the file.
Then it's, there's no sense in keeping my client and the witnesses on hold.
Okay.
And also, I just wanna point out, this is not the first time this case was on. It was on last month.
We only had one case last month, I thought.
I thought this was on the agenda for last month too.
If it was on the agenda.
No, it wasn't.
No, it was not.
No, it was not.
We just got the file.
No, it wasn't.
My mistake then.
Yeah, it wasn't on last month.
Okay, then obviously you're requesting that this case be adjourned in order for the town to locate the transcript.
Right. Or, or Michelle to locate the transcript because she said she may have it on disk even if she don't have it on her computer right now. So she may still have.
I should have it. If, if I did it, I would still have it. If, if not, I have the notes, I could make a transcript. Either way, if I was there, which I would believe I was, I can get you a transcript.
Okay.
And I'm sure I could look upstairs to see if it's upstairs. If it was only 2010, I'm sure it's gotta be upstairs.
I, there could be a transcript, but I don't have one in my file.
Okay.
And also, just to go on record, I don't think that transcript is necessary at all with regard to this application. The new application is 10 years later.
It may be 10 years later, but I would love to know how we went from three units to one unit and why we went from three units to one unit, and if there was any arguments on anything. So I would like to know what was said back then.
Again, you and I disagree. You're the chairman, you're calling the decision, and therefore will have to adjourn my case.
Yes. Um, and, and you'll be the first case on the agenda next month. I won't put nobody in front of you, don't worry about it.
Now, I see that my applicant is on this Zoom, and that's Mr. Wilhofske. And, uh, I go, we are gonna adjourn this without further notice. I'm sorry.
Yes, well, I'll make that announcement, that's no problem.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Wilhofske is now on, he is unmuted. He can hear that this case is gonna be adjourned. Now, I don't see my witness.
For which case?
I'm, I'm here, Bob.
You are, okay. Mr. Sionis, for the case you're adjourning, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so as long as Mr. Wilhofske and Mr. Sionis know it's being adjourned, obviously, uh, your decision to adjourn the case.
Okay. All right, so ZB 202003, DRI Incorporated, 1620 Clark Terrace. The applicant is proposing to renovate the basement of an existing two-story multifamily residential apartment building to incorporate an additional one-bedroom dwelling unit and a, uh, and a community area, area. Yeah, there's a missing letter there. Community, uh, community area for tenants. So that case is, for anybody in the public who's interested in that, that case is being adjourned to the first case on the agenda next month, as long as we get through the first case tonight. Uh, to be held on January 7th, 2021 will be our first case for 2021.
No further notice.
And there'll be no further notices issued either in the newspaper or by mail. Thank you. Now, Mr. Gassion, we may handle the first case. ZB 202002, 249 Linden Avenue LLC. Uh, applicant is proposing to convert an existing two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. You may start.
I just wanna let Mr. Wilhofske and Mr. Sionis know that they can stay, but they do not have to stay because the case is adjourned.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Gassion, just so we are up to speed at the November 5th hearing. I swore in Kevin O'Donnell, the owner and the applicant, he is still under oath. And I also swore in a neighbor, Victor Pascarelli, Pascarelli, Rello.
Pascarelli.
He, he is still under oath.
And they will both be testifying again.
Great, okay.
Okay, should I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Counsel's name is Robert Gassion. Firm is Gassion and Pomaco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant, 249 Linden Ave LLC, obviously the owner of 249 Linden Ave. It's an application seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval and a use variance and bulk variances to allow a three-family dwelling. The structure was built as a three, is taxed as a three, and has been a three since the 1940s. Also permits from the zoning office for work done reflect that the home was a three-family. The bank appraiser went in and determined it was listed as a three-family. Lastly, Price and Lee records reflect three occupants at the property. This is a use variance rather than a certification because we cannot provide continuous proof of use as a three. And there'll be an explanation with regard to that. The witnesses you'll hear from this evening are the applicant, Kevin O'Donnell, the son of the former owner, Vic Pascarelllo, Caesar Padilla, the architect, and Bill Stimel, the engineer and planner. I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. O'Donnell.
Still under oath, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you very much for hearing us, the case. Thank you.
Counsel, you probably should square him in because technically we're starting the case all over again.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. Could you raise your right hand, please, Mr. O'Donnell, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and for the record, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Sure, Kevin O'Donnell, O apostrophe capital D O N N E L L.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell, what is your home address?
3805 Palisade Avenue, Union City, New Jersey, 0708.
What is your occupation?
Um, real estate investor, realtor in the state of New Jersey as well.
Briefly give us the benefit of your experience in that field.
Uh, I've been a realtor for over three years, um, uh, and I've been, uh, in the renovation, uh, business for about four years. Done a lot of single-family renovations in, uh, Union County, Essex County, Bergen County, and some in Monmouth County. And, um, this is actually our first, uh, multifamily.
Are you the owner of 249 Linden Ave?
Uh, yes.
And did you purchase that from the estate of Victor Pascarelllo?
Yes, I did.
And when was that?
That was, I believe, February 10th, 2020, this year.
And did you get a certificate of occupancy for a three-family or any certificate of occupancy from your attorney at the closing?
I did not.
After the closing, did you apply for permits to do work on the property because of the condition it was in and that it was a little rundown?
Yes, we applied for permits.
And what happened at that time?
We were rejected, uh, because we applied for permits to do work as a three-family property, and it was rejected because, uh, uh, it was, uh, considered a two-family, uh, by the zoning department.
Would you review with the board what you did prior to your acquisition to check to determine the legal usage of the property? That is, again, prior to your purchase.
Sure, we, uh, obviously walked the property several times, uh, and we went to the tax records, we saw the tax history. Uh, it was listed as a three-family. We applied for an Oprah report right away. The Oprah report came back, uh, listing it as a three-family. On the Oprah report, uh, gave us, you know, the, the permits that had been pulled over the years. Uh, we had an appraisal done, uh, through our bank. The appraiser came back calling it a three-family. Uh, title company came back, uh, they considered it a three-family. Yeah, so we did, did a thorough, you know, uh, uh, research on, on, on that.
Did the structure look like a three-family?
Yes.
And after you came to my office, did we check the Price and Lee records and did that show it was a three-family?
Yes.
Now, have you obtained a permit to do some work at the site?
Yes, we, uh, in the interest of, uh, time, we, we reapplied, uh, to get a two-family permit, uh, to continue working. Um, and we, we currently have, uh, two-family, uh, we currently have work permits, uh, as a two-family. Uh, we're doing plumbing, uh, electric, uh, framing, um, yeah, so we're in the process now working on the property. But we, we are waiting to see how this goes, to see, you know, if we can, um, uh, continue and, and move forward as a, as a three-family with all, with all hope.
But, all right, what are the number of bedrooms on each floor?
There are two bedrooms on each floor.
I have no further questions to this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, you said there's two bedrooms on each floor?
Yes, sir.
Um, was it always that way?
I, yes.
We have on the tax records that it's two bedrooms on each floor, but the top floor has one bedroom.
Mr. Chairman, you went over this the last time with Mr.
You started the case all over again.
Wait, just bear with me one minute. With Mr. Pascarelllo, why don't you wait till Mr. Pascarelllo gets on the stand to discuss the history of the number of bedrooms?
Okay. No problem.
Any other questions for this witness?
By members of the board? Any questions by members of the public? Seeing none, you may call your next.
I'd like to call Mr. Pascarelllo.
I have a question.
I'm here, Bob.
May I have a question for Kevin O'Donnell?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Members of the public.
May I proceed?
Yes. Now, this is question, not testimony. You can only ask questions based on the testimony given. I wanna emphasize that.
Please state your name, ma'am, please state your name for the record.
Sorry, it's, um, Gual from I'm sorry, what is, you need?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name. I did, still didn't hear it.
G U A L.
Your first name?
Marilyn.
Marilyn, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. O'Don- when you first purchased the home, um, the certificate of occupancy was for how many?
Uh, we did not get a certificate of occupancy. I did not have one in my possession at the time of purchase.
Ultimately, one, correct?
Yeah, we, we ended up getting one, yes, there was one.
And what was for?
It was for a two-family.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No further question.
Okay. Any other members of the public have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Who are you?
My name is Arlene Ortiz, 276 Linden Avenue.
Go ahead, ma'am, what's your question?
Um, I'm interested to know how much the quality of life in our, our area and on our street means.
Question of the applicant based on his testimony.
Well, he's trying to change the, the community we live in.
Well, then if you wanna give testimony, you can give that at the end. But right now, it's only questions based on testimony given.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. O'Donnell.
Who's that?
Noel Augusto, 245 Linden Avenue.
What's your last name?
Augusto, A U G U S T O.
And what's your address?
245 Linden Avenue.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Um, Mr. O'Donnell, when were you issued work permits? You, the date? For, for 249 Linden Avenue?
Uh, over the summer.
You, you don't have a date?
Uh, I can't be expected to remember the day he took a permit out.
Well, Mr. Gassion, I think this person asked the same question last month.
I know. And he still doesn't know the day he took the permit out. He just said over the summer.
Okay. Miss, uh, uh, Mr. Di Lorenzo, are you on?
I'm here, Jeff. Like, probably end of June, beginning of.
Well, wait, I wanna swear you went first, but you were sworn in last month also, but I wanna have, let me, let him swear you went. Uh, Frank, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth? Frankie?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. And just for the record, state your name and your position in the, um, in, uh.
Frankie Lorenzo, construction official, zoning officer.
Thank you. Are, are you satisfied, Mr. Noel?
He said the end of June.
End of June.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the public of the applicant? None. Mr. Gassion, you can go to your next, uh, witness, please.
I'd like to call Mr. Victor Pascarelllo.
I'm here, Bob.
Mr. Pascarelllo, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Could you state your name and spell your last name again, please, for the record?
Sure, Victor Pascarelllo, P A S Q U A R I E L L O.
Thank you.
Mr. Pascarelllo, what is your home address?
27 Beach Street, Nutley, New Jersey.
Did you grow up in Belleville?
Yes, I did.
And what address did you live at when you were growing up?
249 Linden Avenue.
And for approximately how long did you reside there?
24 years.
Was that house built as a three-family?
Yes.
And was it always taxed as a three-family?
Yes.
Did it have three electrical boxes?
Yes, it did.
Was there always three two-bedroom apartments?
Yes.
What, did your father get upset with DCA housing requirements at some point in his ownership?
Yes, he did.
And did he then go to the town and ask how he could get the, off the DCA list?
Yes, they told him if he took, if he took the stove out of the kitchen, that would show them that no one was using the apartment. So we took the stove out of the kitchen and they never came back again after they inspected that the stove was gone.
And which floor was that that he took the stove out of the kitchen, Vic?
That was on the third floor.
And, um, your grandmother, did she continue to use that third floor?
Uh, she used it till she passed away in 2001.
I have no other questions to this witness.
Did anyone use the apartment after 2001, or the third floor? Let's put it that way.
No, that's when we took the stove out.
When your grandmother passed away?
Right, but I do have a, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You, the, Mr. Chairman, you keep referring it to the house as presently being a two-family. The house was never changed from a three to a two. We just took the stove out and the estate.
Let me ask Mr. Di Lorenzo a question.
Okay.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, based upon his testimony, is that not technically abandoning the, the apartment?
Yeah, because he came in, applied for the, the two-family, uh, a year ago whenever they sold the house.
So technically, once they no longer had a stove on the third floor, that was no longer considered an apartment anymore, am I correct?
That's, okay, then, then my question to you is, because the estate is very concerned right now, because for nineteen years, we were taxed as a three family. So if this house.
Tax appeal.
Mr. Chairman, could you let Mr. Pascarella finish one time, please?
Go ahead.
That's what we're interested in knowing about this case also. The house never changed. Until 2020, when Kevin bought the house, my grandmother's furniture was still in there. It's a two-bedroom apartment. Has a kitchen, a bathroom, a pantry. It probably has the biggest kitchen of all the apartments.
If, if you, if, if you're coming where I'm coming from, they asked you how you could not be bothered anymore for an inspection, and they said you would have to take the stove out. Because once the stove out, that's no longer considered an apartment.
Okay, so what do we consider it? An attic?
Well, you would consider either part of the second floor or an attic, yes.
Mr. Pascarella's question is there, why was it?
Let me ask Mr. Di Lorenzo, because he's a construction code official, not me. Am I correct, based upon his testimony?
Yeah, that would not make it a definition of a dwelling, so he would abandon that use at that time. And then he, he would have to go to the tax office and talk to them about the two-family and whatever he did there.
Yeah, but abandonment doesn't come into play. This is not a continuation of non-conformant use. They're here, a used, a three.
No, I'm basing it on his testimony. He keeps on insisting it's always been a three, that he never abandoned the top unit. But based on his own testimony, they did abandon it.
Right.
Now, he never went to the tax department, and if you look at the current tax record and the record going back, which I did, it's always listed as one bedroom on the third floor. That's always been that way, it's never changed. Well, there's always been two bedrooms. Maybe if you, one of your inspectors went in and looked at it, you would see that it was two bedrooms.
I'm just going by what you were taxed as, a one-bedroom.
Well, nineteen years of taxes, right.
All right. Now, is there any other questions by members of the board? No. Members of the public, do you, any of you have a question?
Yes, I have a question.
Who is this?
Gual, Marilyn Gual.
Please, what's your name again? Because we're not coming across here good, it's a bad connection.
Marilyn Gual.
Oh, oh, okay. Yes, you asked the previous question.
Okay.
Um, when was the stove taken out?
2001, testified.
Right.
2001, you say?
Correct.
He testified to.
Okay. So that would be at least twenty years ago, correct?
Nineteen.
Almost. Okay, nineteen. Was your grandmother charged to live there?
She charged to live there?
What relevance does that have? That's none of this witness's business.
Number one, that's irrelevant. Number two, that was the reason he changed it and he abandoned it, because she passed away in 2001.
Let me explain why I'm asking the question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm asking the question because if it was considered a three-family home, then that means that there, if it's a three-family, that you can, what he, Mr. O'Donnell wants to seek is to actually charge someone rent for that apartment, correct? So the question is, was that house ever charged by the grandmother? Technically, I would love to believe that they wouldn't charge their mother, I mean grandmother.
Ma'am, it's irrelevant, because it was abandoned in 2001.
Prior to.
He testified that it's never been rented to anybody.
No, it was rented before my grandmother passed away. My grandmother wasn't there for ninety-two years of her life. She lived on the second floor with my aunt for many years, and it was rented. They had tenants up there, there was definitely tenants.
I'm talking about since 2001, sir.
No, not since 2001, but that's not what she asked.
She wanted to know if she was, if she was, anybody was paying rent before 2001.
Right.
But that's irrelevant, because once it's.
But he was answering that question, Mr. Chairman, he was answering that question.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, her question is irrelevant. Her question is irrelevant. So can we move on? Is there any other questions?
I, I have a question. I asked before, but you didn't hear me. Frank?
That's.
Carmine, Matea.
A member of the board.
Yeah, I said, yeah, I do, but you went pay, I guess I was on mute. Frank Di Lorenzo, you, you said in 2019, when he sold it, he came to get what?
Uh, CCO and sell the house.
Okay, as what, a two-family or a three?
Yeah, that's what we gave him, is a two-family.
And did he argue it then, that it was a three-family?
No, we didn't get any argument at that time.
I do know what I'm saying, did he say, no, this is wrong? You know, because if he got this, the, the CCO as a two-family, then I don't understand how he could then turn around now and say it was always a three-family when he accepted it at the time as a two-family and sold it to this other gentleman as a two-family? Because that's what it would have said.
Well, I personally. I think the, I think the member of the board misunderstands the circumstances. The witness is the son of the owner. The owner is deceased.
I know.
Okay.
I understand that, but Frank made an, uh, and Frank Di Lorenzo said in 2019, when he came to the township to get, I guess, the CO, and I asked Frank, what was it, that, what did you give it to him as, a two-family or a three-family? Because even though he was paying taxes all these years for three-family, where did the change come? When he took the stove out and it automatically became a two-family then? Or when? I don't know, that's why I asked Frank the question, when, what did you give it to?
Mr. Matea? We're here, we're here for a used vans. We're not here for. Pre-existing.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to figure out what it was.
The answer to your question, Carmine, is Frank already testified that when he took the stove out in 2001, that automatically made it a two-family?
Okay, that's what I wanted, I, I didn't hear that part, okay.
Okay. Now, any other questions by members of the board or the public?
I just would like to comment on Mr. Villano's comment. I absolutely agree with what he said. We're not here for certification, because we can't prove continued use.
Yes.
But we think that the facts lead to some proofs that it should get a variance. That's what we're doing, dealing with.
All right. Okay, now, anybody else has any other questions? None?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sandoval?
Yes, sir.
What's your first name, sir?
George Sandoval.
With a J?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and your address, please?
268 Linden Avenue.
Okay. What's your question, sir?
And I would like to know when that apartment was rented? When was the last time that property received rent for that, for that third floor?
2001, sir. That's already been asked and answered.
No, I, if I understand, this is, this is when they took the stove out and the grandmother lived until then, in 2001.
Right.
But, but when was that property, when, when did that property receive rent for?
Apartment, you mean?
For that apartment? Because they're saying that, we talked about the grandmother not receiving, not paying. So the question is.
If you know, Mr. Pascarella.
Yeah. Do I know the dates? I don't know the dates. I remember the last two tenants that they had up there, maybe you want to contact them, I don't know.
Do you know when the last tenant left before your grandmother?
I have no idea.
How about years? We're, we're not, I, I don't believe I'm asking for exact dates, but years will be helpful to know.
Yeah, I have no idea. I was twenty-four years old when I left there. What tenants and when they lived there was never really on my mind at that age.
What, oh. Okay.
So you're talking about when I was fifteen, sixteen years old? I'm sixty-four now, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking if you know when your grandmother moved into the apartment.
Yeah, I don't remember when she moved upstairs. I don't remember it.
So would it be safe to say that it was about forty-five years ago, that, that, that apartment actually lasted?
I objected to the question. The gentleman's putting words in the witness's mouth.
Can't say that. We can't get it to hypothetical. You're asking, you're asking to, to get testimony, which is hypothetical, and we can't do that. I mean, the woman originally lived on the second floor. He testified to that. And then she started living on the third floor. And when she went up to the third floor, we don't know. When she left, we do know, and that was in 2001.
Away in 2000.
Where is the testimony that we can get here?
She went up, she went upstairs when the last paying tenant left. When they left, but I don't know the year. I couldn't give you, I'd be guessing at a year.
Well, let, let me ask you a, a question to make it easier. Do you know if it was in the nineties or the eighties or when?
Mr. Chairman, what relevance does that have?
Well, just to, to satisfy the question.
I, I really don't know.
So he don't know, and we can't give you an answer, Mr. Sandoval, I'm sorry.
Thank you, just, again, he mentioned that it was around fifteen, sixteen years old. When he was fifteen, sixteen years old, he's now in the sixties, so that's the reason why I came up with, or that's the reason why I mentioned that date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other person has a question of, of the witness? Based upon testimony given only? None. Mr. Gassion, you can go to your third witness then.
Hello?
Hello, who's this?
Again, this is Gual. Marilyn Gual.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin O'Donnell, I like to ask him, did he question at all when the stove wasn't there on the third floor, when he went to purchase the, the property?
No, I didn't. We do a lot of renovations, we go into properties that are in all sorts of stages of condition, and most of them are in, you know, some rough shape. And that's, didn't even cross my mind that that would be an issue.
My, my other question is for Pascarella. Did you have any conversation with your selling agent regarding issues that your father faced?
I'm sorry, I can't, you broke up, I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm presuming you're the one that sold the house, correct?
Well, there was five of us that sold the house. I mean, if you want me to get all my cousins and my sister, we could start this all over again, I, I don't know if you want to go that far.
My question is, did you have a conversation with your real estate agent regarding the issue, regarding that third floor that your father had?
It was sold by owner, we didn't have a real estate agent.
Okay, so however, five, whoever was the one that sat with the real estate agent? Kevin O'Donnell, was that ever discussed with him?
The, excuse me, there, there was no real estate agent involved in this transaction. I bought it as a prin, I bought it, I bought it as a principal, representing my, not, not representing anybody, I bought it as a principal, not as an agent. There was no commission paid, there was no brokerage involved. This was a seller-to-principal transaction.
Okay, so there had to be some conversation from seller to principal, correct?
Of course, when we sought, when we showed him the house, we had a conversation.
Was there any conversation regarding the third floor issue that your father faced regarding inspectors coming and questioning the, the third floor being?
No, there was no con, there was, there was no conversations. It looked like a three-family. There were, there were two forms of vigorous for each unit. The, no, there was no discussion about the whole history of the, of the property until after all this.
You never questioned?
All these problems happened.
The stove there?
No, I, I, no. I've already answered that.
Wait, excuse me, if you jump in while he's talking, I, I don't hear what you said, so can you repeat that question, please?
Did he ever question why there wasn't a stove?
He answered that question previously and said he did not.
Exactly. The answer is, he didn't ask the question.
And, and you're, how, you said four years' experience selling and buying?
Yep. Yes, I go into properties that have flood damage, excuse me.
I ask you one at a time, please.
Wait, one has to talk at a time? Because it's being transcribed by our transcriber, and she cannot do that if two people talk over each other, please. Go ahead, sir, Mr. O'Donnell.
You know, we, we've gone into properties that have been, have mold issues, water issues, I mean, horrible condition. It wouldn't cross my mind for two seconds that there wasn't a stove in a property. I, I'm looking at a property that's going to be totally renovated, updated, with everything beautiful, it's not even question, I mean, there was no dishwasher either. I mean, should I have not bought the property because it wasn't a dishwasher? I mean, it doesn't even cross my mind. It doesn't even cross my mind. So you're trying to say that, you know, oh, you've been doing this for four years, you should know better. It didn't even cross my mind. We were just excited to start the project.
That's your answer, man.
And provide housing for some people, and, you know, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, based on the testimony, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So, so the question in regards to the stove, but in regards to the certificate of occupancy, wouldn't that be one of your most important documents to have to ascertain?
Sir, sir.
Or to collect?
Who is this?
George Sandoval, sir.
All right, Mr. Sandoval, let me explain something to you.
Yes.
That's why we're having this application tonight, because legally, it's still only a two.
That's correct.
Right now, it's only a two-family. That's why we're having this application before the zoning board tonight.
That's correct, your, uh, Mr. Chairman. The question is, because at least what I'm hearing is that upon purchasing the home, they believe, based on tax records, based on the presence of the house, based on everything else, they assume that they were purchasing, or, or Mr. O'Donnell was purchasing a three-family home, three, three-family house, but it appears that it's.
And when he went to Mr. Di Lorenzo to get a certificate of occupancy, he found out that under the, the, uh, the, um, construction code department, it was only listed as a two, not as a three.
Mr. Chairman, I know you listen carefully to everything, but that's not what happened. What he testified to is, when he went to get permits to work on the property, that's when he found out. He did not get this, he testified, he did not get the CO from his attorney at the closing. He didn't know it was a two or legally listed as a two, until he went to see Mr. Di Lorenzo for permits, and that's when he found that it was legally listed as a two.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, is that correct? Or did he ask for a CO first? Which way?
No, he, he, the, the buyer comes in, Jer. We very rarely see a seller.
Right, so the buyer came in.
The, the seller came in, I'm sorry, not the buyer, the seller came in, so.
Okay.
Not the buyer.
The seller came in before the closing, is that what you're telling me?
What's that, Jer?
The seller came in before the closing, is that what you're telling me?
I don't know when he came in. He came in probably after the closing permits.
Well, the person who was looking for permits was O'Donnell, that's the buyer, not the seller.
The buy, yeah, we don't see the buyer, we only see the seller when they come in. Then the buyer comes in afterwards for the permits, that's when we see him.
Okay. So the seller came in first, you're saying?
Right.
Correct?
Yes, the seller.
And when the seller came in, you told him it was only legal as a two-family, am I correct?
Yes, that's why we're here, yes.
Okay. And then the buyer came in afterwards?
Afterwards, and he tried to come in with a three, we said it's a two, so he revised his plans, and that's why we're here.
Okay.
That's why they're there.
All right.
I have a question of Frank. Frank, so I just want to understand this a little clearer. The seller, the seller of the property came in in 2019 and discovered that the property was listed as a two-family despite having paid, uh, in taxes for a three-family. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then I have a quick question of O'Donnell. You understood you were buying a property that was three family property legally?
Yes.
Okay, and I have a quick question for Pastor Ella. Does that mean that you, sir, never said, informed him knowing after you picked up the C O that the property was?
Wait, 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 wait. Before you get in like you're a lawyer here.
I'm not a lawyer. I'm just asking a question. I haven't understand.
There's five, there was five, I have three cousins and myself and my sister.
Let me change my question then.
So one of my cousins must have went in and got the C O.
On the time, gentlemen, one at a time.
All right, so I'm going to reframe my question.
Your question, let him, let him.
Are you aware of, or actually, I'll ask Kevin O'Donnell then. Kevin O'Donnell, at any point in time, were you informed that this property was not a legal three family property?
No.
He, just so we understand, Mr. Lopez, he testified that when he went for the permit to do work on the property, that's when he found out. Is that correct, Mr. O'Donnell?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ba, for clearing that up.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. O'Donnell.
Go ahead, who's this?
This is Noel Alavisto from 245 Linden Avenue. Mr. O'Donnell, you just testified to Marilyn that when you bought the house, when she was talking about the stove, that the house needed complete repair. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the.
Yeah, I'm getting to my point.
Go into the same questions all over again.
It's not, it's not, it's not the same question.
Not relevant to the application.
Get to the point, please. Don't go in generals. Just get right to the point.
Well, I met Mr. O'Donnell in February and he bought the house. So sitting outside my house, he came and shook my hand, introduced himself. And Mr. O'Donnell, at that time, as he's walking away, I told him, good luck. And he walked back and said, good luck for what? I said, good luck getting a permit in the town of Belleville, which way in turn, he turned to me and said, the work I'm doing, I don't need any permits. That's my testimony and I'll swear to that and I'll sign affidavit on that.
Well, that might.
That just, that just goes to, just goes to. That just goes to his credibility of what he's saying here today.
All right, you're a liar.
Any other questions of the witness? Can we go to the next witness, Mr. Gassion?
We can, but I certainly object to the last witness. He was supposed to be asking questions of my client and he testified. So I object to that testimony.
So that's, that's out of order. I agree.
I call Mr. Caesar Padilla.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please? Wherever you are with regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your first and last name, please?
Caesar Padilla, C E S A R. Padilla is P A D I L L A.
Thank you.
Mr. Padilla, what is your business dress and your occupation?
I'm at 109 Ellsworth Terrace in Glen Rock, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
How long have you been practicing as an architect and from what school did you graduate?
I graduated from NJIT and I've been practicing for 25 years.
Are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Could you briefly give the board the benefit of your experience in the field of architecture, briefly?
Sure, I've been practicing, like I said, since, for 25 years. I've presented in front of boards in Bergen Passaic County, including Wayne, New Jersey, Ridgewood, Carlson.
We agree, he's an expert. He can testify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Padilla is accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
As long as his license is still current, no problem.
Still current.
Mr. Padilla, would you describe the existing structure on the property?
Sure, the existing, well, it's a framed three-story home. We, we're calling apartments. Each floor has two separate entrances, one in the front and one in the rear.
And does this house look like a three-family house in your eyes as an architect?
It does, yes.
And are any alterations being done to the site or have any alterations been done to the site?
Well, currently there are alterations being done to the site based on our plans that were submitted by the owner.
And can you review what the alterations are?
It's turning the first two floors, again, because he couldn't get the permit for the three family. So the first two floors he's renovating, new kitchen, keeping most of the existing walls, adding a closet and each of the bedrooms on each floor, the rear bedrooms.
And would you review the access to the three apartments?
Sure. Like I've mentioned, each floor has a front entrance with stair and a rear stair and entrance also. So each apartment has two entrances.
And how many apartments are there in total?
Three.
And again, how many bedrooms per apartment?
Two.
I have no further questions, this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the public have questions of this gentleman? Yes.
Are you asking me? Because I was there when it was constructed. So based on what I saw when I was there, it's got a full eight-foot ceiling, so it's a full story.
Okay, any other members of the board have questions? Are, are you the gentleman who? You're the one who made the plans, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And on the third floor, where it listed an existing bedroom in the back, you now are making the kitchen there, correct?
Correct.
And in the way it was before, the front, where you're putting the front bedroom was where the existing family room was, am I correct?
Just to clarify, when we were there, the the floor was pretty much gutted. So, you know, we were basing it on what, new plan, we're basing it on what would flow best, basically.
Was there an existing sink up there in the kitchen?
There's no existing sink. Plumbing that we did see were the remnants of existing plumbing in the bathroom, but there was no fixtures there. There's no kitchen. It was pretty much already.
On the third floor you're talking about?
The third floor, correct. It was already.
The other floors had fixtures, correct?
Yeah, well, it needed, it wasn't disrepaired. Not all of them had countertops, so, you know, it was, I'm not sure if it was in the process of being gutted or not, but third floor was the one that was clearly completely gutted. The other floors were just in disrepair.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions of the architect? No members of the board? Any members of the public? No? Mr. Gassion, you may call your next witness.
Mr. Stimmel.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
William Stimmel, S T I M M E L.
I recall you appeared, you've appeared in front of this board previously as a land use expert?
Yes, as a planner and engineer and traffic engineer.
And you're, you're calling him as a planner, Mr. Gassion?
A planner and engineer, not a traffic engineer.
Okay. If the board, unless the board has a problem, we can accept him as a, a planner or engineer. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Stimmel. From what school did you graduate and what degree did you obtain?
NJIT, bachelor's in civil engineering.
I'm sorry, the board attorney, I went on automatic. My apologies. The board attorney said you're accepted. My apologies. Did you review the existing site?
I did, yes.
And what is this property zoned for?
The property is in the RA1 zone, the single-family residential zone. Permitted principal uses per the ordinance, section 23-7.3A, are single-family dwellings with a maximum of one per lot and schools.
Can you discuss the existing site with particular emphasis on the parking?
Certainly. The existing building was built in 1912. It's currently approved for use as a legal two-family. Based on the architectural floor plans, there is a two-bedroom unit and a four-bedroom unit that currently exists there. It had been used as a three-family at some point in the past, but the reason we're here tonight is requesting the use variance for resumption of that, that building as a three-family. It's only, again, legally permitted as a two-family right now. If you look at the site from Linden Avenue, there's a driveway which runs along the left-hand side of the building to the rear of the property. So you could park along the side of the building or you could park at the rear of the property as it's currently configured.
And how many parking spaces would you think are available?
Well, we looked at the site with the understanding that six would be required for the proposed three-family and you can clearly fit six parked cars on the subject property.
What variance relief is being requested by the applicant?
The primary reason the applicants here is because they're requesting the D1 variance for the use, which is not permitted in the zone. Again, it's a primarily a single-family zone. The existing two-family is not a permitted use, the, but it's legally permitted to be there. Because it's grandfathered in, the proposed three-family would not be a permitted use in the zone and that's why we're in front of the zoning board. In addition, there are variances related to, C variances related to the lot area, the lot width, the side yard, the lot coverage and the front yard. But those are all existing conditions. The, the building itself is not expanding anyway. It's not going out. It's not going up. The lot is not shrinking. So those are all existing conditions, which if the board approves this application or doesn't approve the application, all those conditions stay the same.
Any improvements being made to the structure? Or are the site?
Yes, there's a number of improvements being made. Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Padilla have both talked about the interior renovations to the property, both in the context of renovating to allow it to serve as a three-family should the board look favorably upon it, but also just a general rehabilitation of the structure. In addition, on the outside of the property, the applicant is providing to make some modifications. I believe he's already completed the work on the siding and repainting the house. He's agreed to provide new landscaping. I don't believe there's anything shown on the architectural plans, but if the board wanted to see a landscape plan, that could certainly be provided. And he is also proposing to remove the bay window along the, the left side of the house if you're looking at it from the street or the south side of the house to allow for better circulation along that driveway which runs alongside the house.
Are there any master plan considerations?
There are. I, I reviewed the master plan, the 2009 master plan, as well as the 2019 reexamination. The 2009 master plan states a need for a variety of housing types at a range of sale and rental levels so that all types of families and all income groups can be housed in Belleville. I'm sure the board is aware that the majority of the housing that's existing in Belleville now and in that area of Belleville as well is older. The house, the house on the subject property was built in 1912. It appears that the majority of the lots between our site and Graylock Parkway were built around that same time as you travel towards the north to the utility transmission lines. The houses are a little bit newer, but probably 40s and 50s for the most part. So there's a need for some new or rehabilitated housing in Belleville. The 2009 master plan reexam encouraged the rehabilitation of the existing housing stock, especially for low and moderate income households. Noted the aging housing stock in the township and recommended that the township ensure opportunities for rehabilitation and reconstruction of older housing. And it stated a need to enhance community appearance and the visual environment by encouraging good design for new and rehabilitated buildings. I think the landscaping will certainly work to that end. The fact that they're maintaining the existing structure, which is similar in nature to those going to the, the left or to the, the south of the structure would accomplish that goal.
Would you review the positive criteria in conjunction with the D application?
Certainly. There's two parts of the positive criteria for the D1 use variance. The first is that the applicant must demonstrate that the purposes of zoning have been advanced. I found four purposes of zoning advanced by this application. The first one, which is the one most commonly cited in the granting of a use variance is purpose A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. So first of all, you're constructing new housing units in this existing older building. There's a health and safety benefit which goes along with that. You're promoting the goals of the master plan and the master plan reexam, as well as the state development and redevelopment plan, which contemplates the development of higher density projects in the metropolitan planning area. Second is purpose B, which is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic and other natural and man-made disasters. With the rehabilitation of the existing structure and the extensive renovation that's going on there, the upgrades are going to be made to bring the building into compliance with the, with the building code. Purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And again, the applicant has, has made aesthetic improvements to the exterior of the building and to the, and will make similar improvements to the landscaping. And then finally, the purpose J, which is to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, open space, energy resources and valuable natural resources and to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of land. And again, the prevention of urban sprawl is the, is the aspect of that purpose of zoning that's relevant to the project. We are promoting a slightly more intense development in an area which is fully developed rather than expanding residential development into undeveloped areas. The second part of the positive criteria relates to the site suitability. Why is this lot suited to the proposed development for reasons which aren't applicable to the adjoining parcels? The first reason is you've got a fairly large house on that property. You can provide three reasonably sized units in that building without requiring any addition. And again, it's important to note, there's no change to the building footprint, no change to the building height. The building will stay the same size that it is now. We can accommodate the parking on the site. We're required to provide parking for six vehicles and we can provide parking for six vehicles on the site. There's no new C variances associated with the application. As I had indicated before, there are a few existing non-conformities related to lot area, lot width and so on. But none of that changes. The lot size is staying the same. The building size is staying the same. Building's not moving on the subject property, so there's no change to those. And then, and then finally, and I think this is important, is that the existing building is fully developed as residential. So right now, you've got a four-family unit and a two-family unit in there. You could modify the building to provide more bedrooms without any addition, without requiring any appearance in front of this board. So really, what it comes down to is the only change in the building is how you're partitioning the interior of it. If this was a, let's say a 6,000 square foot office building or a 6,000 square foot retail building and you moved around the partition walls in the interior, you wouldn't be required to apply for use variance. It's just because of the fact that this is residential that we're here. Because the, the state has made the determination that residential, the intensity of a residential use is based on the number of units, not the size of the structure. And that's the positive criteria for the D variance.
Any negative criteria to be reviewed, Mr. Stimmel?
Certainly. The applicant has to demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And I think that word substantial is significant here. For my evaluation of the project, the testimony that's been provided and the materials that have been submitted, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good. Changing the 5,700 square feet of residential space from a two-family to a three-family will have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood in terms of the intensity of development, noise, traffic, parking, demand on utilities and so on. Again, there's no change to the size of the building and no new C variances associated with the application. The only, the second part of the negative criteria is that the use is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. And I went through the reasons why the purposes of zoning are advanced, why I believe the master plan and the master plan reexam support this type of application. And then finally, because of the fact that you, you're asking for a variance for use which isn't permitted in the zone, there's the additional enhanced quality approved to address the omission of the use from those that are permitted in the zone. So I've talked about the master plan. I've talked about the state development and redevelopment plan. I think the other thing to point out is that the, the nature of the use that's proposed is something that's permitted in the zone. Meaning it's residential in nature. We're not putting in a gas station or an office building. So it's similar in terms of impacts to the surrounding properties. It'll be used in the same way, at the same times of day. The same characteristics of the use, but it won't, but it needs that D variance because of the fact that you've got three units where it's a single-family zone and two are currently existing.
Thank you, Mr. Stimmel. Thank you, Mr. Stimmel. Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses, no further questions.
Any questions by members of the board of this witness? Any? And on testimony given, uh, by members, I have a question of the architect. Going back to the architect. And that is because of the plans he submitted. Now, he, he, he submitted a diagram from what I have of the property and it's, uh, it's bordered with the adjoining property. And with the property to his, to the left of this property, of the subject property, it says, when you come in, now I know they're looking to eliminate, um, where it sticks out a little bit in the middle of the building, which is listed as I believe the living area. Yeah, the bay window. He's eliminating on the first floor, but leaving it on the second floor. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Well, where's the architect? Is he still here?
Still here, yes.
Okay, i- is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now in the front, it says the clearance between the wall and the, uh, well, in the event this person, the property line, in the event this person put up a fence is seven feet, two inches. Would that be enough of a clearance for a car to go through?
Mr. Chairman, I think the site engineer might be better able to talk about the site, although the plan was drawn by the architect, the site engineer might be more capable of discussing the
Need the one, whoever could answer that question?
Will answer the question. Uh, we, uh, we had discussed the possibility of, of cutting back that retaining wall there to match the face of the building. Uh, at present, we're proposing to take out the bay window, but leave the wall. If it's a concern for the board, I believe the client would be willing to cut back that wall. And then at that point, you'd have, uh, eight and a half feet from the building face to the property line, which would be adequate for, uh, for a typical car to pass through.
Oh, I understa- in other words, there's a masonry wall on the, on the left of the building, but to the right of the driveway. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I see it here. I see it here. Now I know what you're talking about. Uh, technically, because if the, uh, if the person next door puts a fence up on his property line, uh, that would, that would be very narrow there. Would just, it would be even more narrow than with the bay window. Cause with the bay window, I, i- it's showing seven point three, uh, seven feet, three inches, I believe. Where in the front with the masonry wall, it's only seven feet, two inches.
Yes, it's, it's about seven, two with those obstructions. It's eight and a half feet if you take out the bay window and that, that little retaining wall at the front.
It says eight feet, six inches. Yes. Eight and a half feet, exactly. Eight and a half, all the way through, by the way.
Right.
So I think that would have to be done at least. In, now, if you eliminate that front wall, would that cause a problem with the structure?
That, that's just a little retaining wall. It's maybe two feet high. Uh, you would just get a, I mean, you could get a landscaper to come and do it and cut it back and put in a new block wall there. It wouldn't be an issue.
You said a new block wall. What do you mean by a new block wall? I thought you're taking the wall off.
You, you, you'd have to cut it back to match the face of the building. Otherwise you, your, your front yard would drop off too quickly. I, I mean, I guess you could grade it out, but I think they wanted to maintain that flat area in front.
Well, I think that would be a requirement just to have the parking. I don't want to have to have you come back later. I'd like to get everything done at one time.
If Mr. Stimmel is recommending it, I'm sure Mr. O'Donnell accepts it.
Okay. You're, so you'll accept it, Mr. O'Donnell, correct?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
All right. Any members of the board have any other questions of any of the witnesses? Any members of the public have any more questions of any of the witnesses?
Question of the, uh, planner, board member.
You want to talk to the engineer? Mr. Caruso would like to talk to the engineer. What would you like to ask, Mr. Caruso?
As far as parking goes, we don't have a detail of how you're gonna pa- have the spaces. They gotta be nine by nineteen. I don't see anything on the bookprints where it shows a car parked in the back there. Can you get a, a diagram of what's going on there?
I have, Mr. Caruso, there is nothing in the back. Do you have any difference? Mr. Padilla? Have an answer to that?
I had a hard time hearing the question. I think it was about parking, but I didn't catch the whole thing.
Park it in the back. There's no layout on the plans that we have in front of us. No delineation of the spaces.
Right, it's a, it's a residential site. Uh, we weren't proposing to pu- put a striping in like it was a parking lot. Uh, basically the, the length of that property line is, uh, it's a hundred feet. So you could fit, you know, one after another, at least five cars, just one, one, one after another in a row along that property line. You could park three cars in the back and three on the driveway. Um, you know, however you lay out the parking, you're gonna be required to provide a certain amount of jockeying. Uh, but that's basically, uh, that's basically it. We, we weren't proposing.
You're gonna put, you're gonna put parking in the driveway?
Yeah, how- however you lay out the cars on the site, you're gonna need to do a certain amount of jockeying. If you have a two family there now and you have four cars parked on the site, then you'd be required to do the same kind of jockeying. I, I think the important thing to keep in mind here is that people that are moving into that house know what the condition is going to be in terms of the parking. Um, you know, I
No, no, we can't accept that because then people will park on the street. Well, we can fit the cars. That is a very densified area for parking.
We can fit the cars on the subject property. It would require some cooperation between the tenants. Um, you know, I can tell you that I looked at the census data and the census data showed that the average household in Belleville across all types, studio apartments to six bedroom houses has one and a half cars. I can tell you that, uh, fifty-two percent of the P, the households in Belleville have zero or one cars. Uh, we would anticipate that, that the people that are gonna be living in these units wouldn't necessarily be people that are gonna have a bunch of cars and be going in and out every day. I think you're gonna have a little bit lower ownership of cars. And I think again, you're gonna require some cooperation between the different tenants.
Did I hear you say that fifty-two percent of the Belleville residents have no cars?
Fifty-two percent of households.
Well, I don't think you're right there at all. We have a big parking problem in Belleville. Many plots of Belleville have to have permit parking only because of that.
There, there are areas where there's significant parking problems, but you have to keep in mind, there are a lot of people with different circumstances. Uh, I'm relying on census data. This isn't data that I have or I think could have collected on my own, uh, but I've found it to be generally accurate in the past.
All right. That's your testimony. Okay.
That's not just his testimony, that's the records that he's reporting on.
You got a, a detail.
Correct.
Mr. Caruso would like to know how you intend to park in the back with a detailed drawing.
We can submit a drawing. I, to be honest with you, I thought one had been provided already. I, I may have misunderstood.
You, did he put, do you have one?
You just look at the survey, I think.
Well, where is the parking? You show me where the parking is and I'll show it to Mr. Caruso, cause I can't find it. You have it? Members of the board, does any member of the board have a parking layout?
Yes.
Who does? Who has the parking layout? Somebody said yes.
Yes, Jerry, can you hear me? I have a copy of it. It's digital though. Um, it is showing the parking. And I actually wanted to que- uh, ask, uh, the engineer concerning this parking on this. I won't comment on the drawing, but I would wish that they would give us a much better drawing, giving, given that we are an official board. Uh, this type of drawing looks like it was drawn by a five-year-old, but anyway, uh, we do have one that was provided digitally.
None of us have it here. All of us are looking and none of us can find it in our records. You might be the only one who has it. Does anybody else have it? Any other member of the board?
Do you see a shed, do you see a shed on the Google Earth in the backyard, sir? Yeah. That's gonna be demolished. That's gonna be demolished and there's gonna be plenty, plenty of room for parking. I'm happy to testify right now, cause I believe I'm still under oath. That shed will be demolished and there'll be plenty of parking for people.
That, that shed I see is extremely small shed on a concrete block, it says here. You're in? Yeah. It's not a big shed. It's a little thing.
That's right.
It's like two and a half feet.
It's going off of Google Earth. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page with it.
Well, no, I'm looking, I'm looking at your survey that you put in with your plans. Shed is extremely small. It's an aluminum shed, it says here. Doesn't look like a big shed.
Mr. Stimmel, can you tell us the depth of the property from the rear of the house to the property line?
It's, uh, it's thirty feet deep from the rear of the house to the back property line.
So three cars could easily be parked there?
Yes.
Thirty feet deep by how much wide?
It's, uh, it's thirty by thirty-one. Thirty, thirty-one and a quarter along the rear.
Yeah, so thirty by thirty-one.
How, how many cars you probably park there?
You, you're saying you could park six cars in that area?
That's what I said, Jerry. I said three cars could be parked there.
So where's the other three cars go?
In the driveway is what Mr. Stimmel testified to. And he also test, he also testified that you would have to have cooperation amongst the tenants with regard to the parking. He also testified that he does not expect to have six spaces from three tenants in that building based on the records he has reviewed as to the number of people having par- cars in this kind of a neighborhood.
Well, you gotta remember, you're talking about six bedrooms. So if you're having six bedrooms, I would say a bedroom, a car. A bedroom, a car would be six cars.
And that was not the expert testimony.
I understand what the experts saying. I'm saying my opinion.
That's, you're certainly entitled to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gassian. And, and technically I can't see families. If there's three separate families, one is expecting to ask the other family to move the car out of the driveway so they can get out of the yard. That doesn't make any sense at all.
Happens all, happens all the time, Mr. Chairman.
That's what happens there now. It's a two-family now.
It's a two-family, but I don't think they've ever used parking in the yard. They've always used the parking in front of the building. Because there's no car that could fit through that yard, through that driveway, the way it's constructed right now.
It's not true.
There's no fence along the common property line now. So even though there's no easement, I would imagine that in practice, people would sort of drift toward the middle to get to the rear property. I mean, the aerial photos show some kind of an SUV parked in the, in the, in the back of the house right now.
What did the aerial photos show?
It, it shows an SUV parked back there right now.
An SUV?
It appears to be.
Shows a Jeep Cherokee parked there. Oh, a Jeep Cherokee. Yeah, but in the, the print you were looking for, it, they did email it to us. They have, uh, five spots in the back and then they have another drawing with one, two, three, four, five spots in the driveway into the back. So they actually put two drawings. Like Manny had said, it looks like someone just drew it up. But if you look at the way it's set up, if you're number one in, four other cars have to pull out before you get out. And in the other drawing, one, two and three cannot get out of the driveway if four and five are there. The way they have it set up, so. Okay. Mr. Mr. Giordano has a question.
Uh, I don't know who to direct this to, but if, um, Mr. Gassian, if this was not a, um, if we didn't
I'm, I'm sorry, one second. Uh, nine, one, four, two, nine, four, four, seven, seven, one. Can you, you please seem to be drowning out the speakers?
Oh, okay. No problem.
Thank you. Go, uh, sorry, Mr. Giordano.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have a question. If the apartment was not used as the third apartment on the third floor, what would that space be used for?
It would be used for a combination with the second floor and bedroom space for the third, for the second floor. Additional bedrooms for the second.
Would the bedrooms change?
You'd have more bedrooms, probably. And you can ask the zoning officer, Mr. Mr. Di Lorenzo. I'm sure he'll tell you that that would be permitted.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, would you be able to put two bedrooms up there if this was not permitted or three bedrooms?
Right, it's already been there. There's been bedrooms established since the apartment was abandoned. The bedroom's there, so the second floor can use the, the bedrooms, you know, on the, uh, for the third floor.
So the two, okay, so the two bedrooms up there would be used anyway?
If they want, they could. Uh, nothing say that we can't do it. They just wouldn't let them use the apartment unless you guys approved it. And tandem parking's permitted now in the zoning.
Okay, but what I'm saying is the, the apartments would not, the bedrooms would not change.
No, the bedrooms will not change. They can, the second floor can use.
The numbers would stay the same.
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at. The bedrooms are gonna stay the same. So all this talking about parking, to me means nothing because it would stay the same.
Any other questions by members of the board? Mr. Lallana, you had a question?
Excuse me, I, I'm sorry. Can I just, can I just say something about the bedrooms?
Sure.
We actually, there's gonna be more bedrooms if we stick with the two-family. Cause there's gonna be, we have approved plans for three bedrooms on the third floor. So if we get approved as a three-family, we actually have less bedrooms in the, in the entire structure.
My point exactly.
What do you mean you have a, you have an approved plan?
We have approved plan, we have approved plans for a two-family currently. That's how we got our permits over the summer uh, for three bedrooms on the third floor.
And would that be in conjunction with the existing second floor apartment?
Yes.
So you'd have a total of what, five bedrooms on the second?
Nope, a total of six. A total of six. If you look at the records, we have
Six, if there's only two bedrooms on the second.
Because we were approved for three bedrooms on the first floor, three bedrooms on the second floor and three bedrooms upstairs. But we changed our plans. Now it's only two bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor and two bedrooms upstairs. So if it's, if we, if we stay right now, it will, it will be a nine-bedroom two-family.
They have more point.
If we, if we want to have a nine-bedroom.
We denied this, you'd have more bedrooms. So you'd probably have, you could end up with having ten cars there.
Absolutely. And I, I, I'd I'd rather do a, a three-family with, with six bedrooms. It's easier to, to rent and it's, it's, it's healthier and it's better for the, the community.
Can we put a restriction on the amount of bedrooms, Mr. Di Lorenzo? Well, they're here for two, two and two. You're not listening. You're not listening. Can, as part of the restrictions on an application, if we approve this, can we put a restriction on only two bedrooms for each apartment, that they cannot make a third?
Mr. Chairman, my client has no objection to that restriction. Two, two bedrooms for each of the three units.
Mr. Gassian, would there be any dens or studios, offices in, in any of these apartments? That could be later on used as a bedroom.
We'll, we'll put any condition you want. That limits us to two bedrooms, period. Two bedrooms per unit, three units.
Very good. Okay, any other questions by members of the board?
I still want a diagram of the parking lot.
Okay, we'll get it.
I can't vote on this until I see a diagram on the parking lot.
So then what you're saying is you're gonna have no on the application without it?
What answer we get there?
Make a motion that if it's provided, I know.
Let's make a motion that if it's provided, I know why.
No, no, we wanna see it. Well, then you disagree. I don't just, I'd like to see what I see before we do something.
Would you do that if the bedrooms up there too?
You can't.
Yeah, I wanna see what they're doing.
You can't do that. You can't. So you could end up with more cars there by allowing...
Does any of the public have any questions of the witnesses? Any leftover, or are we gonna go to testimony? Because now we're gonna open up the public testimony.
Right on my show.
Jerry, I have a couple of questions before we open it up to the public.
Go ahead.
Mr. DiLorenzo said he wants to...
Mr. DiLorenzo, the answer to that question?
I don't see anything in the definition for that, so...
I only know what is one in front of the other. That's the only one.
Yeah, one in front of the other.
I don't, I don't know if it's three or more cars.
I don't think it could ever mean two cars. You don't need an ordinance for tandem parking for two cars. That's in many of the houses in the town. That's standard. So it can't mean just two cars. And my client's plan would be three in the backyard, three in the driveway. But again, the testimony is that will never be needed. That was Mr. Stimmel's testimony. So there wouldn't most likely be three in the driveway. There'd be three in the back and probably one in the driveway, net effect of his testimony.
They always do. I think that's common. I've seen that a lot of times.
I don't know of any such ordinance. I'm sure Board Council can respond also.
I don't, I don't, I don't know any of the...
No, five feet from the property line, Frank.
Zero point five now.
No, five feet from the property line. Oh, now it's a half a foot, correct?
Half a foot, but this is pre-existing.
Yeah. Mr. Stim, can we hear Mr. Stimmel again? He'll explain how he plans to have it be wider than the seven feet. Bill?
Stimmel, yes. Let's hear from Mr. Stimmel.
He's the engineer. Let us hear him. Right, I think the first thing that has to be said is this is...
I don't want to hear from him. I'm not gonna argue if he's the attorney for the applicant. Mr. Stimmel, go ahead.
All right, the first thing to reemphasize is that this is an existing condition. You've got people parking in the back now. It's an existing two-family. What we're proposing to do is improve the width of that driveway by taking out the bay window and cutting back that retaining wall to match the front, the side of the house. So you'd have eight and a half feet going from the front of the property to the back, which is enough space for a typical passenger car to pass through. Now, the concern about the neighbor, what if they go out tomorrow and put up a fence? Again, existing condition. They could do that tomorrow whether or not this board approves the use variance or not. So there's no, you know, eight and a half foot wide driveway is not a major safety issue. And the issue with impacting the building, really what you're concerned about is more of hitting it head-on. You know, you see the articles about somebody hit the gas instead of the brake and drove through the front of the Rite Aid, that kind of thing. You know, side swipe to the building is not a major issue. Nothing that I'm aware of.
But there's no need to. There's still eight and a half feet.
It'd be eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet. Except where the bay window is. It's eight and a half feet and we're removing the bay window.
Right.
Eight and a half feet.
And that wall in the front, too.
Yes, of course.
Yes.
Yes, that's the property line.
Yeah, see, once the bay window's gone, that retainable wall's gone, there's eight and a half feet. The house in the front between...
They do now. Mr. Stimmel, would you answer that, please?
Again, it's an existing condition, but the typical car is about six feet wide, some as wide as six and a half feet. There would be enough room. It'd be tight, but if you've got a giant pickup truck or something, you're probably not gonna be parking in that parking space. I'm getting a lot of feedback.
This guy here. Anyone who was on, would you please refrain from talking or having a TV on or anything else while we're conducting this hearing? Because you're interfering with the hearing.
I muted them.
Mr. Stimmel, could you answer the question, would there be a problem with a regular standard car?
No, it'd be tight potentially, but you could still get out.
Okay. Any other questions? No, that's, well, foot and a half on each side, but if he goes close on one side, he'll have two feet to open up the door.
Mr. Sheldon, just a point of interest. If this is denied, and you can vote any way you want, and this can be a six-bedroom apartment on the second floor.
Richie, if you're talking, unmute. Richie, if you're talking, unmute.
Okay. The second floor could eventually have six bedrooms. We're worried about two, two, and two. Six-bedroom apartment can have fifteen, maybe more people in it. I would rather see the three apartments. That's your call. You're fighting over parking, which makes no sense to me at all because you can have twenty cars there if you go to six bedrooms. You're making assumptions. You're making assumptions. No, I'm not. I'm making facts. Okay, you do what you wanna do.
Mr. Chairman, this is, the width is getting somewhat ridiculous. There are parking spaces in many municipalities where the requirement is eight and a half feet. The largest is nine feet. We're not talking about something that's out of the ordinary here. Eight and a half is a normal width for a parking space.
Mr. Chairman, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
He could talk. All right, John, here's the whole situation. We don't have it. We're not going to get it, it looks like. Okay, so you could either vote yes or no, depending upon the facts presented to you.
But they've been parking back there, John, for many years.
Well, that's questionable because of that bay window area, you know. So, you know what? Why don't we open this? Are we done with all the witnesses? Let's open it to the public. They wanna make any comments. Testimony, any public, any member of the public who wants to give testimony? Is there anybody who wants to give testimony from the public?
Jerry, before we...
I do.
Can I ask a quick question of Mr. DiLorenzo?
Go ahead.
I have here something, Mr. DiLorenzo. I just wanna read to you and I want you to explain this to us. For one, two, and three-family homes, tandem parking spaces within a driveway and a garage shall count towards the residential parking requirement. Maximum of three tandem spaces may count towards the parking requirement. That's part of the, one of the requirements for the parking. Frank, can you explain that a little?
Which one you reading? Manny, which one you reading that of? You might have the wrong zoning book. Because you changed it like three or four times.
Yeah, this was just recently sent to me, so I don't know exactly which...
Yeah, you might have the older one.
All right, let me...
It came not in...
I'll come back to you on it. That is the newest one. Thank you.
Manny?
Yes.
Is this the one that they sent to us of the recent zoning changes that they just did a couple of months ago?
That's what Frank just asked, and I believe I'm being told that... The last part of it is, so, one second for me.
Frank, those are the changes that were passed in October.
Yeah, but this application, it was this was...
No, it was filed before that, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But just to add a point to what is being stated by Mr. Lopez, we're not gonna have more than three. We will have three in the backyard and three in the driveway. Three.
Can we get to the public?
For a total of six.
All right, but my understanding is that the three in the driveway will be blocking the three in the back. They will not be able to get out.
No question. There'll be tandem in the driveway and you'll have to have cooperation. No question about that, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, can I open this up to the public now, please? Thank you. Who wants to talk from the public to give testimony? You would have to be sworn in and you would have to give whatever testimony you want that's relevant to the case. It would have to be relevant. And we don't care about anything before 2001, please.
I have something to say. It's more of a comment. Noel Augusto from 245 Linden Avenue.
Yes, could you raise your hand? Where are you in?
You have to be in the hand to give any comment.
Raise your right hand with regard to this application. Do you swear the testimony or comments that you may give shall be the truth?
Yes, sir.
And you're Mr. Padilla, correct?
No, Noel Augusto.
Augusto, he's on the top. Ah, okay. That's Noel, Noel Augusto. Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead. What do you wanna say?
Like I said, it's more of a comment. I believe the gentleman's name from the board was Richard. He was saying that three families, he'd rather see the two-family, even if it has more bedrooms. And the way I see it, be based on the level of cooperation that everybody...
To have the three-family with only two bedrooms in each unit instead of...
Correct, as opposed to the...
It would be a total of, I think, over six or nine bedrooms.
Correct, correct. That's what he said. And everybody else also said that there was gonna need to be some level of cooperation between the three families. Where, the way I see it, it would be easier to have cooperations when there's only two families involved, as opposed to a third, even if there is more cars.
Okay, sir. We'll take that into consideration. Anybody else who wants to give any testimony?
Yes.
Who's that?
Marilyn Gwaw.
Marilyn, okay. Raise your right hand, please.
I'm raising.
To this application, do you swear your testimony and comments shall be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Neighborhood property owners of 249 Linden Avenue appeal to the Belleville zoning board in respect to the existing town zoning ordinance, which was adopted by the elected representatives of the citizens of Belleville and by which longtime taxpayers have come to expect from our neighborhood. We ask that the zoning board ultimately deny the variance request, strongly object. While converting this property into an additional housing unit is an income-producing opportunity for the applicant, the reality is that it is a neighboring property's owner's safe haven of raising our very own families and ultimately our goal to protect the character of our neighborhood. Applicants requesting such variance bear the burden of providing competent, substantial, and relevant evidence to convince the zoning board that the existing zoning ordinance presents, quote, "practical difficulty" or, quote, "undue hardship" to justify the request for the town to grant the applicant's variance, merely showing some hardship is insufficient. All in all, we ask that the Belleville zoning board not grant a special privilege nor a free pass from the town's regulation to this property owner. We believe that granting of this variance will alter the essential character of our neighborhood and negatively affect... We believe that granting of this variance will alter the essential character of our neighborhood and negatively affect the property value. Um, we, it will negatively contribute to the overwhelming issue of limited street parking. As individuals that have lived here for close to twenty-two years, this is like Mr., um, the chairperson said, is a very highly dense community. Okay, there is a fire hydrant in front of two forty-nine, which also limits the parking. This is essentially evident, especially during snow days, alternate street cleaning working days, where vehicles are practically parked bumper-to-bumper bumper with the goal of avoiding parking tickets. Additionally, the value of the home will depreciate when time comes to sell our property, for the area will lose its character of a single-family home zone. Furthermore, granting such variance will set up the possibility for a trickle effect that other adjacent houses would want to convert their homes to income-generating property without no true value for the property and its owners. Now, I suspect that Mr. O'Donnell will be, um, not dwelling in this home, but will be, uh, he's asking for the town to change the variant, to provide the variance, and then he's going to wash his hands of the property and leave us with, um, the, the changing of the zone. Now, another thing, the civil, the civil engineer mentioned positive criterias. Now, I would say that those criterias can still be accomplished while keeping the home as a two-family dwelling. Now, the attorney mentions that there's going to be some cooperation that's going to be needed for street parking, but he's failing to consider intoxication. If somebody's intoxicated, he's failing to consider like all...
Ma'am, ma'am, we can't go with intoxication.
Well, people will get drunk and they drive, or they're going to park. I mean, it's a reality.
Well, it depends. If, no matter what, if this is a two or a three, it's going to make irrelevance.
Well, it's going to be very hard, to Sheldon's point, if there's a close, narrow parking, right? The likelihood is that there's probably going to be, you know, if your mental state's altered, is the likelihood, if you don't even have any, um, room for error. Um, another thing, different work hours. What if somebody works at six o'clock in the morning, another one works at eight o'clock in the morning? Who, in reality, is going to be parked lined and cooperate? I know that the, the term says that this is, is beneficial, and Mr. O'Donnell said it's beneficial to our community, but I think it's going to bring problems. It's going to be, um, parking street problems. People are now going to be, um, um, juggling for parking spots. And like, um, Mr. Noah, Noah mentioned, um, I see it like, also like Mr. Sheldon. If it stays a two-family home, now you are encouraging a family with likelihood of children, that they will not be driving to live here versus couples, two, two, and two. And usually, there's two couples. This is a working community. That means that there's going to be two vehicles per household. And that's like my point. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to give testimony?
My name, my name is Jennifer Fidalgo. I'm the owner of two forty-five Linden Avenue.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this matter, do you swear your testimony and comments shall be the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name again, please, and spell your last name?
Susanna Fidalgo, F-I-D-A-L-G-O.
Thank you.
And your address?
Two forty-five Linden Avenue. I'm the owner.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So, um, I am putting up a fence, because my property is the property next to, uh, two forty-nine. And I am putting up a fence, and there isn't space there for a car to fit. There isn't a space now for the car to go through. Can you imagine me having a fence there? It's not, it's not possible. And, and, and like Marilyn said about, uh, families, uh, parking and moving cars, it doesn't work in my household where we have three cars. And if one of the three cars are parked in the driveway, I have to get up in the middle of the night. I have to get up in the morning to move cars. It doesn't work. And our street parking is horrible. If you come after five-thirty, there's no parking in the street. You gotta park down the block, on the, around the block. It's, it's horrible here. You have to live here to know what's going on.
Ma'am, according to the survey, your house is to the south. Am I correct? The immediate south of the question, of, of the property in question.
If you're, if you're facing my house, I'm left to two forty-nine.
Right.
I'm the white house.
And, and according to the diagram we have of the plans that came from the architect, the, the, the space, even if you put up a wall directly on your property line, which you're not allowed to do, I think you have to put it a, a couple inches off the property line. Frank, Frank, how many inches off a property line? Frank? DiLorenzo? Hello? Hello, it's Frank. I, I know that there's a requirement that you can't put a, a fence directly on the property line. It has to be, I think, three inches off.
Jared, I'm here.
Are you there?
Yeah, there's no requirement.
You have to put the fence, how many inches off the property line?
Now, she could put it right on the property line.
Now you could put it right on the property line?
Right on the property line.
Yes. It, it, it will follow the back of my fence, where it's now at the back of his house. And it would come forward to the front, and it'll be...
Right on the property line, it would be eight and a half feet.
It'll be impossible for them to turn into the property. If they're coming from the street and they're coming in, it'll be impossible for them to turn if I put the fence up, which I am.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say, ma'am?
Um, no, no, just, just the parking issues. I mean, you can ask anybody that lives in, in, on Linden Avenue. We have impossible... We, there's no parking here. There's no parking, absolutely no parking on the street.
All right. Anybody else wish to give testimony?
Yes, yes. George Sandoval, two sixty-eight Linden Avenue of Belleville, New Jersey.
Could you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you may give shall be the truth?
Yes.
And it, you're, um, Mr. Sandoval, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, I, I don't want to be redundant, so, but I certainly agree with Ms. Marilyn, uh, regarding her testimony. Uh, the other thing is, in regards to the engineer, he mentioned that based on his studies and everything else, is one point five vehicles per household. Uh, so whether you make more rooms, uh, or less rooms, we're talking about families. So, it, it won't, it won't increase the amount of vehicles, um, just because you increase the amount of rooms. Uh, just like they mentioned, it may be young children that may be part of the household, and therefore, uh, they will not be driving. We, we heard from everyone regarding parking, but you're not, you're not discussing parking during the winter. And certainly, if you're utilizing every single open space in the parking on the back, there is no way for snow removal in those spaces to be able to park that many vehicles in the driveway and in the back of the house. To include, we talked about the narrow ways. We didn't discuss one minute in regards to, uh, any snow. Any significant snow in this area will create a significant hardship, because the vehicles would not be able to park there, or the owner would have to move all that snow to the, the house, um, outside in the street. Um, the, the engineer discussed about existing conditions, and we just heard from their neighbor that they will add, uh, a fence. Uh, the existing conditions have lasted for over twenty years. Uh, so, to discuss what is existing, um, it, it, they're looking to make a change. So, existing, in this case, doesn't apply, uh, to that. And as well, finally, we talked about numbers, and we also talked about, you know, studies. You're hearing from Belleville residents, you're hearing from the experts in this area, right adjacent, adjacent to the house. And I concur with a, all of our neighbors to say that it is a detriment to increase the amount of units in any of the households in this street. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else want to give testimony?
I just want to add something to what I said before, um...
Who is this, please?
It's Susanna Fidalgo, from two forty-five Linden. Um, last year, uh, they knocked down my steps, like Mr. Sheldon said. The, a car came and knocked down my steps when they were fixing to remove the, the oil tank out of there. So I had to get them all redone.
Okay. Anything else? That's it? All right, anybody else from the public? Is that it? Then, Mr. Gashium, do you wish to sum up?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Gashium.
First, I'd like to comment with regard to statements made by objectors. Noel made a logical statement that two families, children, but the three, the extra bedrooms are going to lead to more cars, period, period. The parking is going to be the same as it is now. If you leave it the two, three, the three two-bedroom apartments. When you add the bedrooms to the second floor, you're going to have more cars when you add those bedrooms. Normally, people object to schoolchildren. Now we're talking about small schoolchildren being acceptable. That's not the situation here, if you have that number of bedrooms. If you have that number of bedrooms that you would have on the second floor with the third floor, you're going to have cars. Someone talked about their property value depreciating because there's a three-family. This house is not going to look any different. In fact, it's going to look better. It's not going to be any different. It was built in nineteen hundred and twelve as a three-family, and was used as a three-family, except for the fact that an owner at one point didn't like the idea. They had to follow the rules of the state of New Jersey with regard to care of the car. The statement about intoxication, that's irrelevant. Anybody could be intoxicated. It doesn't matter. That could occur. So, the objective statements, I understand, there may be a parking problem in the neighborhood, but this house has been there for over a hundred years, most of which as a three-family. Built as a three-family, taxed as a three-family, used as a three-family. Again, repeating, changed only because of the Department of Community Affairs requirements that the then-owner didn't like complying with them. My client did an appropriate investigation, and I think this is relevant, Oprah, tax records, et, et cetera, to determine that he was buying a three-family. It looks like a three. It's got three meters. Various permits as a three. No structural changes are being made should this application be approved. The architect has indicated that there'll be an improvement in the looks of the building. There'll be landscaping. And you're going to be, the applicant's going to be using the property as it was built. The bay window will be removed, the wall will be removed. You'll have eight and a half feet of width, whether the fence is up or not. Eight and a half feet is more than enough for cars to go in and out and have people get in and out of the cars. In addition, there will be no more than three cars parked in a lot in the driveway, because there are three parked in the lot. The basement will be used for storage only. That has been made clear. The only difference with this property was a stove was taken out for the three-family built in nineteen hundred and twelve. The master plan talked about the need for housing. Density is not an issue right now in Belleville. The density requirement has been removed, period. It is not in for new construction. We're rebuilding a house. We're rehabbing a house. We're going to enhance the community appearance. Talking about hurting land values, we're going to nothing but help land values by enhancing the appearance of this and improving the landscaping. The purposes of zoning are being advanced. Encouraging the appropriate use of property. Well, certainly, a house that was built as a three-family, a three is the appropriate use of property. Higher densities in metropolitan areas are encouraged. We're upgrading to building codes. There's an aesthetic improvement. The site is certainly suitable. That's what it was built as a three-family. Tandem parking is permitted up to three, and that's what we need. We do not need more than three. We'll have three in the back, three in the tandem in the driveway. If you leave it as a two-family, you can have nine bedrooms. If you permit it to be a three-family, you'll have six bedrooms. My client clearly understands that there will be a condition that he can only have three two-bedroom apartments. There couldn't be anything more than that. And he would understand any restriction as to the other rooms, not having closets, having open doors, whatever the board deems appropriate in order to ensure that this be used as three units with a maximum of two bedrooms, and that's the way it was built in nineteen hundred and twelve, and that's the way it was used for most of the time. Certainly, there'll be no harm to the intent and purpose of the zone plan if the home is used as it was built. And I thank the board for all their time and attention to this case, and I further thank the board for allowing us to start all over again, so that we could hear the case this evening. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen. Open to discussion among the board members.
I still stand what I said. I'd rather have the six bedrooms than nine, nine bedrooms. To me, it's going to be overpopulated. There's a chance that you're going to have twice the amount of cars.
Okay, Mr. Caruso.
I, I can't hear Mr. Caruso.
They can't hear you.
They can't hear you louder.
Louder.
We got a lot of engineers and everybody else talking, and I want to see them riding or... All the parking on the premises.
Okay. Well, if you have to vote tonight, you're going to have to vote tonight. Okay. Anybody else wish to give, uh, any statement? Uh, any other board member I'm talking about? Mr. Sheldon, Mr. Lopez?
I have, um, actually have a bit of a question of the board members, or, or anyone, um, that can answer it for us. If, if the application this evening is denied, can the applicant ask for, um, an adjustment on the taxes from a three to a two?
Yes, the answer is yes.
The answer is yes. Okay.
You notice, you notice to get, get, argue. Okay. Sheldon, you have anything to say? Mr. Sheldon? Okay. Mr. Matea?
Well, I have a copy of the parking. Um, and I understand what Mr. Sheldon said, and I also understand what Mr. Giordano said. I would tend to side with Mr. Giordano, because you're going at three with two, two, and two compared to two, and now you have more children uh, in the school system, the whole thing. Now you're overburdening everything. Here, it's nice, it's clean, and it's going to be a little jockeying around from their, their, uh, print. But, I mean, you know, they're not really violating anything with the parking. It's the way it should be.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Valano? No comment. Okay. So, can I have a motion, one way or the other?
I make a motion to approve the project with the conditions.
With, with...
Five of the votes necessary.
All right.
In addition to our norm regarding the, um, the fourth compliance with the fourth one. If this is approved, the masonry retaining...
I can't hear you, Lou. Can you get closer to the mic?
Can you hear me now?
That's better. Thank you.
In addition to our normal conditions, compliance with the, um, with the, um, with our board consultants, I have the masonry retaining wall to the right of the driveway, uh, is to be removed, and that will result in eight and a half inches of driveway width. I'm sorry, eight and a half feet, yeah. Eight and a half feet of driveway width from the house on the property to the property line of the neighbors. Um, the aluminum shed is to be removed. That's the aluminum shed in the rear yard. The applicant has accepted a... The aluminum shed is to be removed. That's the aluminum shed in the rear yard. The applicant has accepted a condition.
The bay window. Don't forget the bay.
Yeah, I have that, yeah. I'm sorry, I had that from, from last month. The two bedrooms and three apartments, in three apartments, will be the maximum, two bedrooms apiece, the three apartments, for a total of six bedrooms. Basement for storage only, the bay window, and that's it.
Okay.
And again, five affirmative votes are needed.
So motion has been made by Mr. Giordano. Do I get a second?
Second.
By Mr. Valano. Clerk call the roll. Gina, are you there?
She's muted.
I'm muted. Sorry about that. Who's second? I didn't hear it.
Oh, the second is Valano.
Okay. Caruso.
Yeah.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Lopez. Manny.
Sorry about that, no.
You're no, okay. Matea.
Yes.
Sheldon. Valano.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
No.
No?
No.
Your vote is denied.
Motion denied.
I thank the board for their time and attention. You're welcome. Uh, no, we have certain business to do. And I have to, and everybody would please, except for the board members, you could all go off Zoom now. This is board business. Thank you. The only board business we have is I don't remember us ever approving a calendar for next year.
Yes, we did.
When did we do this? Because I can't find it any in a minute.
I have one ready if you want to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let's do it tonight. So that way it's added away.
I did it. We did it in July, if you remember, but.
We did. We did it in July. July, July. Me, me, put on July.
We did, well, we did the reorg, but I'll do it.
All right. Okay. Just be careful.
Okay.
Just so you know, public are not off. And if I go off, I'm getting everybody off, just so you know, so I can't do that.
Leave them on.
Leave them on. They can hear this. Nothing. We're just, we're just double checking to make sure there's no problem.
Doesn't have to be in, in private. This could be done on a level. They can sit in the audience, they can stay on Zoom.
Yeah, they would hear it in the audience, yeah.
Motion to approve the calendar. Motion to approve the calendar.
It was approved, but I'm just saying, it was approved at our, at our.
He would like to do it again.
Well, let me ask you a question. When does the calendar end that we approved in July?
I'm sorry?
When does it end?
What do you mean, when does it end?
Well, what month is the last month on the calendar that we approved?
What? Does, we, we go from January.
Twelve months. Did we do it from July to June or what?
No, we did the whole year.
Okay, so.
January to December. I go January to December.
And we approved it in July?
Of twenty.
Yes.
Don't make sense. Why would we approve something six months into the year?
Hold on. Gina?
Yes.
Is it a twenty-twenty-one calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, we did it.
And we approved it in July?
Calendar I have.
When we, we on.
Record, we approved the twenty-twenty-one calendar, and we approved it several times, and this is our, is our paper. And we approve it for the whole year.
All right, so let's do the vote a second time. When we made the motion, I seconded it. Let's vote. Gina.
Yeah.
Call the vote.
Caruso. Giordano.
Yes.
Lopez.
Lopez.
Manny.
Yes, yes.
Matea.
Yes.
Sheldon. Valano.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
And now we can have our adjournment if there's no other. To me, please, or. Well, to Gina and Michelle, try and find the transcript back these ten years.
I know. When I come in on Monday, I'll look for it.
Okay. Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Mr. Valano. Setted in by Mr. Giordano. All tables. All right. Okay, roll tide. Thank you. Have a good New Year.
Holidays.
Merry Christmas.
New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.